Okay, let's call the Garden Prairie Board of Alderman Work Session to order December 4th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, items for discussion or consideration, okay? First item is consideration of Darden Prairie and Great Rivers Greenway and a community college agreement to release the property that Darden Prairie is currently under contract on back to GRG for use by the community college. Okay? This goes back, I mean, quite a ways. If you want to start from the beginning, that piece of property, do we know the piece of property we're talking about, everybody? Okay. That originally, there was an agreement with Barrett Academy High School to use that piece of property for their sporting events. And then whenever, they had priority to use that. They had, it's still plum for irrigation, it's got electric on it, and all of that comes from the school, which the community college now owns. Okay? So, in that agreement, the residents of Darden Prairie were allowed to use that facility whenever the school didn't use. After the school moved out, the, uh, Linenwood bought the school. And then, there was a joint agreement with the community college in Linenwood. Had classes there, that, that building and that piece of property set kind of idle for about a year. And previous mayor went to GRG and asked if we could have that for rental, use it primarily for city activity and city functions, and they had allowed that. We had a cricket academy that lives in Darden Prairie, the, the, AJ, who's the head of the Cricket Academy, he came with his group and asked if they could put a cricket pitch in. And the city allowed it, they're currently playing cricket on it. And then as the community college pretty much took over that facility, and has grown into, they added this culinary school to the curriculum, which, which they turned the practice gym building into a culinary facility. And if anybody, it hasn't been over there, you need to go over there and look at it, it's beautiful facility. They've, they've got plans now to build another building just kind of south of that building, kind of little bit south west of that building. But what's going on is with their expansion and their activities, they conflict with the Cricket Academy's schedule for playing cricket. Cricket Academy said they have no problem moving as long as we had a place to put them. My initial intent was to ask GRG for a, about five acres of property that joins the Bluebird field right off of Henning Road to put the cricket field over there. Well, I guess through some opposition, they decided, no, we weren't going to do that. Well, it is kind of a nuisance both for the cricket players and for the school for when, when the Cricket Academy plays cricket there. So, Bob Ronkowski from Cotterville, the mayor of Cotterville, reached out to me. We set up a meeting with AJ, he's got a soccer field that has just not been used in several years. And he said they could have that for their cricket field. They went and looked at it and they, they said absolutely, I mean, it's got easy access, it's, it's parking, it got a restroom facility, it's, it's, you know, so they're going to move forward with moving the cricket field to Cotterville. Now, the school would like to use those fields to expand the culinary education. Now, I mean, John will talk here in a little bit as far as what, what they plan on expanding it, but from my understanding, it would be maybe some nut orchards, maybe a small vineyard. They would maintain the trail that goes around it right now. That trail that goes around that whole field never did initially go around there. It used to go down along the creek into that oxbow and back and around, never touched those fields. Got washed out with, probably within five years, there were three times that Darden Prairie came out, washed the trail away. And, uh, so they rerouted it around that field. My understanding, the college is going to take over the maintenance of that trail around portion of the field that they're wanting. So, at first, when we got those, we had a lot of interest and a lot of people renting that for soccer practice. We had multiple year contracts on there for lease. But in the last, I don't know, probably at least two years, I don't believe we've got any kind of income off of it, except from the Cricket Academy, which they're planning on leasing. So, it's actually going to cost us, kind of other cities have been saying the same thing, the soccer players are now going to these turf fields and a lot of those are popping up around and a lot of private clubs now. So, as far as soccer goes, as far as any other sports, whether it be soccer, football, lacrosse, whatever, there is, no one has come to us asking us to use that. We've got two actual areas that could be rented out alongside of the cricket field. So, anyway, that's pretty much the background. What, what we're wanting to do is we're wanting the board to say whether or not, you know, the city is interested in, in moving forward with just turning these back over to the school. They can still be used for public access, the trail is, is a public trail. I know when talking with several people at the college, they said as far as like nuts and things that fall on the ground and with their, with their trailer, as far as growing lettuces and the things that they grow, that they have no problem with sharing those with the community. So, I mean, all I got to say. Anybody want to speak up?
Yeah, I would love to speak up. Um, I don't have a problem, you hear me? No, I don't have a problem with the move for this. I know others might, and that's fine, we can talk about this. But if we do move forward, I would love to work with the community college to build a partnership with city of Darden Prairie. Went to the conference, kind of learn about partnerships with cities and small municipalities. We're a small municipality that we can, I think we should support our youth in going to programs at the community college for summer programming. And I think a great thing for our residents would be like a little small discount from them to give it to Darden Prairie residents only as a, as a, how can I say that? As a partnership, partnership, but in hindsight, this will support actually the growth of Darden Prairie students going to St. Charles Community College to make sure they're taking their college classes when they get to high school. So if they feel comfortable on the college campus at an early age, they can move forward and move, go to there early. So that's, that's the one caveat I would say I would love to do, is just partner with them to do something that's meaningful for our city, not say we'll give back money for us, but it will go back to the community. That's the only thing I would ask.
I, I love it.
Um, I do have an outline I would share with you, but it's, I don't know how the process goes at this point. So I will share the outline with all the aldermen and the board members, outline I came up with. Uh, well, I want you to read my outline first before I sign an RBA or introduce us to RBA first. Sounds good, I'll do that for next meeting. Is it for next meeting or not?
Fine, yeah, okay.
I have a question. I had heard that the land was not necessarily owned by Darden Prairie, but there's like some sort of 99-year lease, is that correct?
On GRG.
Okay.
Property is GRG's property.
Okay, so how does that impact the value that the land has to Darden Prairie? Like, what are we giving up? I know we're giving up obviously the land and, but it's not like we outright own the land. So I just was curious about that aspect.
Well, the, the value would be, as I say, the first couple of years when we were able to lease it out, okay? Now, in that lease, it's specifically clear that whatever we get off of that property, a percentage, I think is it 10% or? But, oh yes, yes. Well, we have to put back into the fields, into their property, anything that we get off of it, we have to reinvest into their property, okay? But I thought we had a percentage we had to actually give back to GRG. No? Okay, but I know, yes, for anything, right, for reaping any financial benefit.
Besides, I I, I think what you're asking is, is there a property value with the, to that lease term? The answer is likely yes. Do we know what that is, if it quantify that? No.
If I could speak to that, sorry.
You say that, but because the contract says, anything we get off of it, we have to put back into the
Can you guys hear me?
Did that answer your question, Mark?
To the, to her point, so now what are you saying is we could not build on that land at all?
Um, just want to confirm that. We can make improvements consistently per purpose, consistent with potential, but could we use it for a public purpose we want? No.
As far as building on it, there's the, it's in a flood plain, so.
Short answers.
Yeah.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Yes, no, probably not. Test. Hello?
Hey, Mark, you got any questions, any comments? Okay, John?
Test, one, two.
I mean, as far as like, kind of how this, I mean, well, introduce yourself so people know. John? Turn that mic on, press the button. Look, there's a button on the side. Under, maybe the bottom. Okay, look in the bottom, there should be a little button somewhere. Okay? The green?
Can you hear me now?
There, okay. You're gonna have to hold it to your mouth.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh huh.
Uh, so my name is John Weeman, I am resident of O'Fallon, Missouri. I am Vice President of Operations for St. Charles Community College. With regards to the college's position on this request, we have, we have been on this location since I want to say 20, 2015, 2016, I think is when we took ownership of this location. And the city has had, you know, a relationship with Great Rivers Greenway for this property that's located behind our Field of Table Institute. Right now, the current situation is, is that we have people that are accessing our campus at, you know, mostly on the weekends, coming to, coming on our property, coming down and parking on the parking lot to access the fields in the back. You know, there has been occasions where we've had some, I wouldn't say all right vandalism to our property, but we've had things that were disturbed, we've had trash, we've had, it just, it's just not a, a good situation for really all parties. The, the Cricket Academy, they are very much interested in having access to this field. And there's on occasions, we have events, we have, in some cases, we can actually lock off that, that parking lot if we need to, to secure that space. So it's, it's an accessibility issue for the, the cricket folks that use the field. And it's really kind of a security issue for us, having people on that property. So that's one issue. The other issue is, we are looking at expanding that campus. As the mayor had indicated, we're going to be building another building, about a 15,000 square foot building that will be right next to, adjacent to that building, down there in, in that, that area. So the pressure on the parking lots, the pressure on that use of that space is going to, is going to go up. And so our concern is, is, you know, if we're going to have folks that are going to be using those fields during the week and then on the weekends, that's going to, that's going to put more pressure on, on our, our students and our people that are coming to use our facilities. And then of course, the other issue is, is that we have a, a growing culinary and ag program. Our ag program is really expanding and we are looking at developing a, a viticulture program. We, we don't, we don't know yet whether that field is going to be really conducive for growing grapes. I, I think right now the consensus is it probably isn't. But that, that field could be used for other ag programs that we have, that we would like to use. Cause right now, our current field that we have, that we do any kind of ag stuff on right now is only about three acres. It's not, it's not really a large enough space. And so we'd like to have more space to be able to do that. We think it makes sense, it's a win-win for, I think, all parties is because the cricket folks, we have found them an alternative location for them to go have a, a great, you know, cricket pitch and have adequate parking and restroom facilities. It's a win for us because we have access to that land, which is right next to our property, and we can continue to, to keep it open to the public. We will, we will have to honor the agreement. It's, this is kind of a three-way transaction that's occurring here because first, you guys have a current lease with Great Rivers Greenway. So you have to end that lease in order for us to be able to lease that land from the Great River. So we still have to go through, jump through a lot of hoops with them in order to be able to lease that property from them on a long-term basis. And, you know, the really, the biggest thing for us was, was we didn't want to displace the, the Cricket Academy folks. And so that my commitment to them, the college's commitment to them was that we would not ask them, or we would not make this transaction occur until we found an alternative location for them. And fortunately, we've been able to do that in Cotterville. So for us, we think this is a win-win all the way around for the city, for us, and for the Cricket Academy. And this, I think will be, will be a, a good thing for the city.
Is that something that you would be interested in, in the partnership that Ryan was speaking about?
I just learned about that actually from him just today, but the, you know, we certainly are always open to having those types of partnerships with all different types of institutions. So we do it with other educational organizations and, and I don't think we've done anything with the city in, in that regard, but I mean, it makes sense that we, we have a campus in your city and if it's something that we can do legally, I don't know what the legal ramifications, because we are a, a political taxing district. And so I don't know if we, if we can even legally give an additional, I'd have to have our attorney check into that, but certainly we can, you know, we, we're open to that, yeah. And we're, we're going to be expanding our, our summer camps at the Darden Creek Campus. So, yeah, we'll have that capability.
Where are you looking to put additional building on where the football field was? Or?
No, the football field is still, will be undeveloped at this point. It will be, if you know where the, the old, the old baseball field or softball field, whatever it is, you know, we had the greenhouse and we had the freight farm, just basically west of that. So as you walk down towards the Field of Table, on that sidewalk, on the right side, there's a little green patch of grass, that's where we're going to, going to put that in right there. So we're going to add additional classrooms, we're going to actually, we're looking at putting in a cafe market, so that could be another addition to the city as far as a, a eating and dining location that will be next to the Field of Table. A lot of exciting things that we're doing down there. We're, we're making also another investment in that, that, that field I was telling you about, that's right out there. It's about three acres. We've been working for the last six months with a landscape architect to develop a master plan, and it's going to be beautiful when we get that done. We have a outdoor kitchen that hopefully we'll have that done by the end of this year. And then we're going to develop that space. It'll be for, for entertaining and for people to go out and see the gardens and, and it's, it's going to be a wonderful event place.
Other question on the other side with the homes behind you there, have you thought about putting any more buffering of trees or shrub or anything like that? Because that, that has been a concern of the residents there.
Yeah, I actually had that conversation with our landscape architect. That's part of our master plan is to make sure we do things to help mitigate any kind of, of, you know, neighbors to our, to I guess to our, I'm not sure if it's our, our east or what it is, but it's over to that one side that you're referencing. Yeah, anything we can do to help, you know, make sure it's, we're good neighbors. We are actually in the process of, we just had authorized for doing some work with the other folks at the Barrett Haven property, where we had some issues with our property line was not, it was not a, a good, well-written or well-designed property line. So we're redoing that with them to kind of make that more usable land for them as well. And that's, that's part of the discussion. They want to know what we're going to do with the football field. And I was like, we don't know yet. That's, that really just, we have not had any discussion about developing that space at this point.
They have football games.
Well, we finally got rid of scoreboard, the scoreboard's gone, so. Yeah, thank you.
Actually going to the conference we went, I have I want, I want to be personally interviewed. Um, so I want to be
I can assure you, college has to be legal, nice to be.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Test.
Mike, I would like to say something, but we're having some issues over here.
Can you guys hear me? Test, one, two, test. Testing, one, two, test. Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Barely hear you, Mike, but we're trying to.
Okay. Test, one, two. Is that better? Can you hear me? Test, one, two, test. Testing, one, two. What I have to say is not that important.
It's really, I mean, it's really light.
It's really faint? Test, one, two, test, test. One, two, three, test, testing, one.
Call my phone in, I can put you on speaker.
Um, if you just want to read what I wrote in chat, that would probably suffice.
Look, Tom, I think it's one of those electronic levers on there. Can't tell you which one. We had this once before. Yeah. Uh huh.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Testing, one, two, testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Can, can you hear us, Mike?
I, I
Okay. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to move forward with this. So that we can go ahead and take the steps necessary to do the paperwork and have it
So moved?
Right here, right now. I mean,
Head somber.
In a second?
Hello?
Hey, sorry.
I put you on speaker?
Yeah, I'm kind of hearing, but I can't do it on both, so I can't hear the, the mics at the same time.
Okay, but hold on just a second. Can you hear Mike?
I can. And I tried to make a motion to direct the city attorney to proceed with drafting something for us to review to release the lease with Great Rivers Greenway, so that they can do with it as they wish.
Say that again, Mike, one more time.
Um, I, I was trying to make a motion to direct the city attorney to work on drafting a release or a authorization for the mayor to release the lease on that area that we've been talking about, back to Green Rivers Green, Greenway, for our consideration in the next meeting.
Carla just asked for a postponement because she said Keith has got some things he wanted to bring up about it. At the next
I'm stuck on that.
Yeah, and, and we spoke about that a while ago. This has been something that I put an RBA in back, what was it, August? So this has been drawn up for quite a while. I believe that the last time we spoke about it, we, we had talked about moving forward with at least getting the details out so we can have a, a nuanced discussion about it. So I'm, I'm curious. I, I know Keith in that meeting had voiced a desire to see compensation for the city. I don't think that's going to be, just based on the conversations that I've had with appraisers and others, I, I don't think we're going to be able to get anyone to put a value on this piece of property because I, I don't think we're going to be able to get anyone to put a value on this piece of property because I, I think there's a misconception. We don't own the property. It's not useful for any commercial purposes and it costs the city more per year to maintain it than we will, we will get from any kind of leases or anything on it. So I don't think that we are going to be able to ask the, the community college to give us hundred, $200,000 or anything like that in payment for releasing the lease. So I would move that we at least draft up the paperwork and get moving on it. Without any kind of demand for a payment from the community college.
Okay, Mike, thank you. So there is a motion to postpone. Is there a second? And there's a second. All in favor? We got four eyes, so the motion to postpone carries. So we'll postpone it until the next meeting. Dude, oh, we can't, no? Yeah. That's why we were wanting to move forward. Okay. Next item is, let's go your 2025 budget. Yeah, I think.
You, you were invited a hard copy of the FY25 budget. I, I do want to share with you in front that there are no material changes to what I distributed to you via email Friday night. Kim and I just worked over the past couple of days to really see the budget, eliminate some duplications. Sure, we had things in the right buckets, but there's no significant changes to what was presented, no additions. Or deletions of any items that we've discussed previously. So first of all, it's very important for me to note that we are presenting a balanced budget. Revenues, we're showing budget increases of 10%. That is primarily coming from, hold on just a second. Grant funding related to road projects, but also additional revenue from court fines. About a 3% increase in court fines projected. The expenditures increase for non-capital expenditures of 27% is primarily due to expanded police services. And increased street maintenance cost. There's actually a decrease in our capital expenditures of 15%. Capital expenditures you would anticipate would vary from year to year. And as we've discussed previously, some of our capital planning is being deferred until after we get the operating budget adopted. And we have a little more time to, to move forward on that. Some expense highlights. So scheduled debt service is 1.4 million for 2025. Seeing personnel costs of 1.4. Police services, as I mentioned. We've got a placeholder in here. I've doubled what we paid this past year for police services. The, the county police department is proposing a couple of options for us to consider. I'm going to meet with them on Monday to review those. And then I will bring them back to the board with more specifics about how we can address your concerns and interests in expanding police services in Darden Prairie. But I thought this was just doubling it was a good placeholder to throw in there for now, since we need to move forward with adopting our operating budget. And then street maintenance of 1.65 million. There's been, there's a need to adequately fund street maintenance on a going forward basis. So we maintain our streets in good condition. So key budget changes and initiatives, all of this was discussed at the last board meeting. But just to highlight again, hiring a city engineer, upgrading city hall technology and security, contracting for a stormwater master plan study, contracting for additional police services and increasing our street maintenance activities. Our projected FY25 ending fund balances. So we have a total, we'll have a total fund balance of 10.4 million. That's reflected in 4.8 million in our general fund, 1.27 million in Parks and Stormwater Control Fund, 1.2 million in our special revenue fund, 1 million in our transportation fund and 2.1 million in our capital improvement fund. I also wanted to, to share with you that in balancing the budget, we are using $200,000 from the stormwater master, the Parks and Stormwater Control Fund. And $150,000 from special revenue fund in order to balance revenues. We're shy of expenses, about $350,000. But again, we have a very healthy fund balance. We're not compromising our financial position by using those funds. And honestly, those funds are there for special projects. For example, in the Parks and Stormwater Control Fund doing, doing the stormwater master study.
Can you go back real quick?
Certainly can.
My first time.
I have not gone through the detailed sheets that you have in front of you. I just did an overview of, of. What I would see that happened was we would have walk sessions prior to. All of these line by line in detail, and maybe some of the other board members have participated in those. And unfortunately, instead of a fast track, we couldn't fit those sessions in. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the budget line items. Open it up if any questions you might have.
I have a question. Are we, do we need to, to go through the line by loss and ask questions? Or maybe some questions might be answered with your PowerPoint.
I've finished my PowerPoint, so I'm happy to go through any, I mean, there's, you know, 28 pages here.
Sure.
So I'm happy to go through whatever.
No, I had a question about the police and you answered it. So, because I saw it doubled, like, so that makes total sense. So I'm just wondering if it's more prudent to, to wait, go through your detail and then you might be answering some questions that we might have. Or if you prefer to just ask questions.
I would really like to just open it up for questions. Again.
I have some questions.
Okay, good.
Just looking at the, at the first page here, I know there's IT services and it's not a big increase, but there seems like, there's been a lot of dialogue about the IT professionals that we have and how people are unhappy with them and so on. And I'm just wondering, I think we're locked into a contract. Is that, is this just using the same IT people that we've used in the past, do you think?
We, we are going to bid out those services.
Okay.
And we've anticipated that, one thing that staff would like to do is consolidate our, our service provider so that we have one contact for our security system, our IT system, our door lock system. So the, the cost that's been included here, it was an attempt to anticipate consolidating those services, but also looking for more comprehensive services in particular times of day service. So I know myself, I've, I've experienced issues outside of the, you know, seven to seven, Monday through Friday window that have prevented me from being able to do work that I've wanted to do off hours around the weekends. So I think expanding our service hours would be important to staff as well.
I guess keeping with that front page, and I don't want to take up too much time, but just covering some things. Planning and zoning, it looks like the amount has been reduced 67%. On the first page under expenditures.
And let's go back to the expenditure worksheet for that and we can see. I think there was a study that was in a previous, I think the town, the town vision, vision study was in the budget before. So that's why there's a decrease in that, in that category.
I'm fine with you going on board. I might have some follow-up, but.
Under business development. $24,000 decrease. Maybe this isn't what I'm thinking that it is, but.
So, James had entered into a three-year contract with a, a company. And quite honestly, neither Kim nor I really know what that, what that service was to provide to the city. Don't know that it's been utilized. It's certainly not to that extent perhaps. Again, I'm just not familiar with what it might have been. So we're not going to continue that.
Okay.
Since we don't know what its value is to the city.
Okay.
Dare you know.
Yeah, but since you're really new here, you have no clue. This, this company was called Nexite. And they're like a economic development company that provides any kind of demographics of like. Our counts, where money's spent as far as like credit card, as far as like people in Darden Prairie, where they spend their money. What they spend their money on. So. That data's there. You can call them, you can ask them, and it's for our use. What businesses might go early on. They said it was close to $20 million a year left Darden Prairie to buy groceries. So, I mean, that says, well, if everybody spent their money in groceries in Darden Prairie, it could support more groceries. Trying to get a grocery store to build here is another, you know, fill them that day. Convincing them that's the right spot. I know they've got, you know, data on everything from groceries to clothing to cars to, you know, housing, stuff like that. So they're a professional, uh, uh, economic development company.
It's an economic development tool that the city was using, not being familiar with it.
We were paying over 60 plus thousand per person as our economic developer. Decided that this was a better way to go.
Oh, Mike wants to ask. I'm sorry.
Mike, that's a question.
So when we. So when we decided to not backfill our economic development function at the city, instead replace it with this, there was a request that we have some kind of tracking metric, some way to verify at the end of the contract that we did get our, our value out of it before we re-up it or before we, we give them a new contract. Have we tracked that? Do we know that we have gotten our value out of this economic development consulting firm? Do we have any of those metrics?
I know, I know James had contacted them several times on several different issues and got what he was looking for. So exactly what it was and I, I'm not keen on the details, but I know he said that they were pretty quick on giving him what data he asked for. So if there's anything in particular that anybody wants, can ask him for it, or before we get rid of him, ask him for a report.
Understanding is. Treated of. Economic data for the city that they had originally produced for us. But I don't know that we've seen any actual economic development activity occur in the city because of them over the past four years. So I would like to take a look at that in next year's budgets. What does the city really need to do to spur the economic development? Do we need to, to bring in another head count and rebuild that economic development function of the city? Or is there another company that may be able to help us get some of these lots filled?
My understanding, my understanding, hey, Mike? Mike, can you hear me? Mike, can you hear me? Yeah, I'm on, hello. My understanding of this thing, and I looked in some of the reports before, it, it basically did tracking of people like going to Target here, but then going over to Langseg Lewis and doing their shopping there. And it basically tracked cell phones was, was the majority part of it.
As far as movement goes, it tracks cell phones.
Movement.
Tracks credit card spending.
Right, it, it, yes, it tracked credit card spending and what they were buying and things like that. So it did give us an insight to what we could use in this city as the mayor, you know, alluded to. We could probably use more grocery stores, but trying to get that done is another story. But I don't think for the money we were spending, it was, it was really benefiting us that much.
I would agree. And whenever we did originally vote on this to take that expense insurance and contract, but it was billed as a way, and I think when we first talked to them, if I remember correctly, they said that there were millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, some ridiculous number that was leaving the city that they can help us recapture. And that they would replace our economic development function as a city. When, what I've seen from them exactly, Mark, what I, what I heard you just say, they've given us some metrics, but we have absolutely no capability inside the city to actually capture that value. So they tell us what value's out there, but there's, we don't have the ability to capture the value and actually translate that into development and profitability for the city. So I don't know that it's benefited us anything at all. And I'd like to look into, as far as the budget goes, reflect a, a focus on economic development in the city. Because I think that needs to become a top priority for next year.
Well, I agree with you 100%. And as I come back from that conference, there's a lot of development and avenues that we can take. And some of it is at no cost to us to look at some of our development, which I am putting together to present to the board also.
So I guess my, my direct ask would be if by the next meeting, the city administrator can take a look at what other cities do. What other cities normally spend, what percentage we should be, and give it a, advice to us on what we should be spending next year on economic development if we want to effectuate a positive change in our posture here in Darden Prairie.
I've made a note of that and I will certainly make that a project to report back to the board on.
I have a question. The street maintenance number, would that include just replacement or would that also include any traffic calming measures? Because it seems like, again, dealing with subdivision and safety and stuff, another subdivision that I've been involved with in Ward 1, that safety, speeding, traffic control is a big, is a really hot button issue right now.
Hold on, I'm getting, trying to find that page.
No, I'm sorry.
Big document, just trying to look for it. Hold on. They're in account order and not like alphabetical, so and I'm not familiar with your, with the account numbers off the top of my head to find them easily. Sorry, it's the last one. Okay, so in street maintenance, the one point two that's there, that's specifically for the county maintenance and repair agreement, which includes the concrete and asphalt slab repairs specifically. We have another fifty thousand in in-house maintenance. Um and then another two hundred thousand for crack sealing, and then twenty thousand in unscheduled repair. So I think between the general maintenance and the unscheduled repair, we have some money for uh you know, the various things that come up during the year related to safety and traffic control.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
This is not for this year's budget. As I was, uh for next year's budget, um loggers for um the alderman, is that something we can look into for next year's budget? And I don't know how to start that process. Could you kind of tell me what the process is of that, on that?
Go ahead.
Oh. Not for alderman, right?
Not for alderman, no, and all of that, I don't even.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, to be through uh ordinance, aldermen have to vote on it. Kind of pay increase, any kind of benefits or loggers or anything like that. No one gets anything until next election cycle. You're wanting to look into loggers for aldermen?
Yes, correct. Is that, is that a good thing, a bad thing to you, Mayor?
Uh as far as our city goes and our city uh level and that, you know.
It's just a question. I mean, I'm not saying it has to be.
Afford it, you know, it'd be great, but I mean, we.
Okay, that's fine. No, no.
There's a lot of.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Priority.
Okay.
That's one, two.
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, I, I didn't know if it had been fixated or not, so thank you, Tom, for getting it fixed. Uh to Ryan's point, I would be, I'd be interested to see what loggers would cost for uh if, to include the alderman and just at least get a number on that. Um I would agree that the process would have to be that we would have to vote for um an, an increase to uh a compensation for aldermen um to take effect after the next election in the next term. Now, I would ask the uh city attorney, would that be the, after the next election or when the next term for that alderman starts?
Well, for any increase in compensations for the next term of any alderman or mayor, not for next elections, next term.
So if we voted for an increase in compensation right now, half of the aldermen or half of the seats would get that uh bump in pay or compensation April of next year, and then the others would have to wait a year after that when their next term starts. Is that correct?
Assuming this is a compensation increase that we can, that is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, it was a question, it was not something I'm for sure with, it was more inquiry more than anything.
So the other thing you need to take into consideration is that with loggers, you have to be in a position for five years minimum in order to even qualify for it, so. You know, as an alderman, it's a two-year term, you'd have to win three, three consecutive terms to be eligible for it.
Thank you.
And I would, I would extend it to mayor too if we did consider it, and that would only be two consecutive terms.
What's that?
I was saying if we, if we were considering it, I would extend that to the mayor as well, which would only be two consecutive terms.
And you're gonna make that retroactive?
Not today.
I'm just kidding. Come on.
So I have, I, I have another question um about the darting ball fields, because I just recall that there was a lot of conversation pre-Cathy about the signage and stuff. Remember, they were like, oh, the, the signage is not working right, maybe we repair it, whatever. And I was just wondering if it's included in the current, but, oh, it is, good.
There is twenty three thousand dollars included for this, the electronic sign that's here in the park, correct?
Thank you so much.
Is there money in the, in the um ballpark fields budget for the pitching machine that
Oh, yeah.
People were asking for?
No, so I did put it, I did put a line item in the capital projects as a placeholder reminder of this, there was a couple of things that came up during the last board meeting when we talked about the budget, that being one of them. So that when we work on the capital improvement plan, the long-term capital improvement plan, we will include that as a project in that process. We're, we're, we're working to adopt primarily an operating budget now. It does include some capital projects. Um but then we'll come back um starting in January and develop a schedule for putting together a capital improvement plan, a long-term capital improvement plan, three to five years.
I'd just like to make sure that that is a priority so that they can have it for when the season starts this next year, so, and I'm not real sure when when the kids are gonna start that, or whether it's April or May or what, but so that they have it when they.
Brian says it's March.
Okay.
Yeah, so you will see under the capital projects, batting cages, active recreation amenities, school safety improvements, Blue Way headwater improvements listed in italics. Those were intended to prioritize those for the capital improvement plan process. Um we could, we could, if the bat, if the board feels the batting cages is a priority, um we could work to get uh cost estimates and do a, you know, go out for bid on that. Uh and then come back to the board to get approval, which would include a budget adjustment for that amount if you're trying to meet a timeline.
The only other question I have is back here, under expenditures, almost near the end, um the city hall park concession stand?
Yes.
Um, I think. I, I, I'm not clear. Do we, we lease the concession stand to an individual?
We do.
Okay, um. Is that a yearly lease or?
It is.
Okay, all right. Can we look for a new contractor?
Yes.
That service?
Yes, we can. We will.
Yeah, it is my understanding that it has not been put up for competitive bid for a while. Is that correct? When was the last time it was competitively bid?
I'm not. Oh, well, probably at least four years ago, because it hadn't been by three years.
Yeah, they are getting a really, really good deal on that uh concession stand, so I'd love to see it competitively bid this year.
All I know is that in the past ten years, it's really hard to find anybody to do.
Then it should be pretty easy for them to win again.
Your board will work on it for you, Mayor.
There was a time when board and uh staff did manage a concession stand.
Okay, I'm, I didn't say that, Mayor. I never said that, but we will work on something.
I think it's a conflict of interest.
I have a, I have a question. Um in general, building expense, it has miscellaneous, and then it has Tree City USA, thirteen thousand dollars. Is that simply to be able to print on our sign that we're Tree City USA? Because it looks like it's gone, it's been semi-manageable, but it seems like it took a big, it's like, I don't know.
So we did increase that line item to twenty six thousand. In order to be a Tree City USA, you have to budget two dollars per capita. Now, in terms of actual hard dollar spending, there's a lot of things that count towards that, anything related to trees like mulching, et cetera. Um you can also include trees planted by developers towards that. So it's not actually, and you can see that, it's not actually a hard cost. Uh I haven't had a chance to dig into how um James has justified that, the city administrators have justified that in the past to maintain Tree City USA status. And we have until December twenty fourth, I think, to apply for this year, but yes, it is to maintain a Tree City USA designation. So if that's important to the board, uh again, I don't see that the hard costs are actually going to be that much. You're just required to budget that much and then document and prove this the in-kind or, or worth of, of that.
Is, is that part of the program to where a resident, the city helps pay for planting a tree too?
We, we, in the past, we budgeted for planting a tree. And a lot of those trees went on residents' property.
Correct.
Or in the right of ways, you know, uh previous staff wanted to move that uh off of the in-between the sidewalk and the street curb that right away into the person's yard so that now, once we planted them, they maintain.
Because, because planting in between the sidewalk and the tree just caused problems because it tore up the street and the sidewalks.
It's uh.
So, so, yeah, so, so we have assistance program with residents to, to plant their trees in their yard. And what portion, we pay half of it or certain dollar amount, or how does that work?
I'm sure what it's, I think we pay for the whole thing, for the whole tree.
I thought it was half or something like that.
Ones that were planted in the right of ways, they were replacing, if they died or whatever, at the cost of this. We need, we need an ordinance update to get them to be planted in the yards of them. I didn't write.
Well, what if they're or the resident doesn't want a tree in their yard?
Well, then they don't have to take it.
Oh, okay.
They don't have to take it.
I thought you were just saying we were.
I don't know. Right? Okay, moving on now, uh. Work session isn't intended to go line by line through the budget. We're hoping that it was out early enough to where you could have went through line by line and made uh notations and brought the notations up. So, I mean, uh if we not saying that we can't, but I, I, I'm gonna say we call a special session if you want to go line by line. I know when Kathy and I did, what we, it took us about five hours.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't open it when I tried to open it. That was my issue.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah, same here. It's an XPS file that doesn't really open.
Unfortunately, nobody shared that with me. I would have been happy to send it out to you in another format, except for Carla. She let me know. Um I, I had no idea that you all couldn't open it. I'm sorry.
I thought it was me, so that's why I didn't want to say anything.
Yeah, I, I was able to open it myself. So, yeah, and I.
I could open it, but not print it out.
And that, that was the purpose of it um that are sending out, because I had brought questions to Kathy earlier about some of the issues. And hopefully people, you know, going forward, we, we do that, get them cleared up ahead of time.
I'm, I'm good. I asked most of my questions, so.
Okay, so moving forward to review of the Board of Aldermen agenda. Concerns? Have communications, city attorney? City engineer?
Yes, sir. So just some highlights to point out there in the report. Um obviously, the first one being Town Square, final plans have been submitted to MODAT and St. Charles County Road Board. And we continue to uh, uh we, we will be um waiting their final review, allowing us before we can proceed to going to a, a bid. Um and we continue to work on post-road. Uh we continue to have a lot of conversations with St. Charles County Road Board about our projects that were underway. We meet with them on a regular basis, and then first big thing coming up right now is the call for the projects that we're working on and getting. I, I believe Kathy's going to be presenting, you know, okay, here's the projects we're moving forward with. Some of them are, obviously, they're listed here, so. But we're prepared to move forward at, at your direction and staff's uh direction. Um another thing of note, we do have a coordination meeting coming up with uh O'Fallon staff. Uh Kathy, myself, and Lindsay will be meeting with their staff, their top staff just to talk about road projects, things potentially. I'm sure we're gonna be talking about what I'm sure we will be. Not sure where that's gonna go, but we will have those conversations. We are prepared to start our own as directed earlier meetings uh out at technology. But I think it does warrant some other communication. They also. Be interested to find out where they are with their roundabout and crusher and stuff like that. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'll get an update on that. Similar to some of the improvements that are supposed to be occurring potentially at Brian and Fizey.
Hey, administrator.
Thank you. Uh well, breakfast with Santa was this past Saturday. It was a sold-out event. Unfortunately, the weather kind of kept some folks home, so we only had about fifty percent attendance, which was still seventy, excuse me, seventy family and friends. Um Chris's cakes was flipping pancakes and serving tang. Those of you who remember tang, um didn't know.
You can go to the moon.
And of course. Excuse me, of course, Santa was here. I do want to thank staff. They were led by Nicole. Um but for all their work in making this an enjoyable event for our Darton Prairie families. All donations that were collected for this event were given to the Salvation Army. A reminder to the board that the Board and Commission's appreciation dinner is tomorrow night at six P M. And then a reminder to our citizens that on December fourteenth, they're encouraged to come out to the Schnucks at Town Square and support the Salvation Army Red Kettle Campaign, um ring the bell and, and donate. Um I think all of you maybe are signed up to, to ring the bell. Let's hope it's not really, really cold. More like today would be appreciated, um but we're trying to keep our title of most generous residence um that we've had since nineteen, since twenty twenty-two, so hoping to, to continue that. And then uh the stump road contractor has advised they are setting up their traffic control subcontractor to open phase three tomorrow. Um they would like to move forward with the phase four closure and begin that work as well. I'll be getting a more specific update of the work to be completed during the next two weeks, and I will send out an update once I have those specific details.
Hey, alderman.
Yes, I just wanted to talk on uh pancakes with Santa. It was a lot of fun. Um Ryan helped out Santa upstairs. I think next year he could probably be Santa. Oh, he, he did such a great job, and Kathy stuck me with the sausages to serve out, so she handed out the butter, but no, it was a great time. I just want to say, Kathy, thank you for the budget and the detailed information that we received, you know, the, the three-plus years I've been here. Probably been the best report we've uh received so far. Thank you.
But I do want you to add Kim into your appreciation.
Well.
She did a lot of, lot of heavy lifting on this as well. We were a team um working together to get this finished for you guys.
And we know Kim is a backbone of Dartine Prairie, so I've told her that from the day I came here.
Hey.
Okay.
Got something to go on?
Um in looking at the calendar coming up, um I'd like to go over. I'd like to go over dates in January for the meetings. January 1st is the first Wednesday of the month, which I presume we were not gonna have a meeting.
It's a holiday.
Right, but what I would like to do is shift everything one week, there are five weeks in January. So our first board meeting would be the 8th. E and Z would be the 15th. Our second board meeting would be the 22nd, and then court would still be in the month on the 29th. So I just wanted to get that out there before the calendar comes out and it's something different, and then we gotta change it.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sounds like a plan. Got there, Kathy? All right.
If I can make a comment on that real quick. If we do that, and I'm perfectly fine with, the 8th is actually going to be my swearing-in day in Jefferson City. So that would put me at the end of this month after the next meeting, I will need to step down from the board, so I know that at that meeting, the first meeting in January, you guys need to look at designating a new president of the board, and I will be crying, because I, I'm no longer a member of Darton Prairie, so I just want to make sure that that was, that was clear as well.
Okay. All right. Mike, we'll keep you informed.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, anybody else?
I'm gonna keep my comments for later, because I know we're running out of time, so.
Out of time, I, uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, session is adjourned. Okay, we're gonna take five minutes and then we'll come back and start the regular session. Uh.